I said that email for sure. But maybe he was, was he there? I was confused by my name.
I want.
He may have lunch before you figure it out. But either way, it's the wrong way. It's not this way. It's the other way.
But he did, he was like, do something now. And I was like.
When I said it first, I'm sure. Has it been about it? No, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's my whole story for tonight. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I know, I know.
No.
Do you think, um, you can edit the sections? Are you talking, she has to edit the sections?
Thank Chairman, can't get in the seat.
Oops.
I just did what he asked me to do. I wanted to try one. I could just imagine he'd like thirty seconds.
Six o'clock.
Sorry, sorry. It's six o'clock. I'll call the February eleventh, uh, meeting of the Sherwood Planning Mission order. Please call the roll.
Cliff.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Jones. Hoskin.
Here.
Evans Delory.
Here.
Patel.
Here.
Are there any additions or corrections? Oh, sorry. First, first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from, uh, the January meeting.
Motion to approve.
Motion, we have a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Cliff.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Hoskin. Evans Delory.
Aye.
Patel.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of tonight's agenda. Are there any additions, corrections, or changes?
We, uh, we can take the discussion of the building design standards off.
Okay.
For this month.
Okay. All right. Uh, with that change, we'll call their agenda set. Uh, first item, please.
A conditional use permit for a property located off Oakdale Road for a gasoline service station.
So, the staff's requested action on this. The, the applicant has requested to table this pending further revisions to the application to address comments. Uh, but they did ask that we continue the public hearing to next month. So if you want to open the public hearing, receive any comments, continue it to next month, uh, for the, for the purposes, they'll be coming back.
Do we need to even open it if we're, because it, because it was advertised, we need to open it and just leave? Okay.
Since it was advertised, I'd let, I'd say go ahead and take comment.
Okay. All right. So this item does call for a public hearing, uh, so I'll open the public hearing at this time. The secretary has three emails that she'll need to read into the record.
I think a couple of individuals signed up.
Do we have, yes.
Oh, which?
Okay. If there's some individuals here to speak, we'll let you go first. Guess not, okay.
Um, I had a few emails, all in support. Um, Jennifer Nichols wrote, as a resident and consumer in Sherwood, I wholeheartedly support a conditional use permit at the property of four point seven four acres owned by Harps to construct a grocery store with a fueling station near the intersection of Highway one oh seven and Oakdale. I believe this will also help the expansion and improvement of the gravel ridge area of Sherwood. Um, Sharon O'Neil wrote in support and said that we need a Harps in Sherwood. And then Stephen Angler wrote, as a Sherwood resident, I support the addition of a Harps to be constructed at the intersection of one oh seven and Oakdale Road. I believe it would benefit Sherwood residents on the north side of town to have produce and bring revenue from the other communities north of Sherwood.
Okay. Since the applicant has asked for this to be tabled, we'll leave the public hearing open, but we do need a motion and a second to table it till next month.
Motion that we table?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Cliff.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Hoskin.
Aye.
Evans Delory.
Aye.
Patel.
Aye.
Next item.
Site plan at lot, at lot twenty A, Sylvan Hills addition.
Mesquito.
Yes. Let me get to it here on the, says Harps. Okay. Sorry. Okay. I made this a smaller. All right. The applicant is requesting site plan approval for an urgent care medical clinic that's going to be located on this two point four eight acre vacant site. The site is located at the corner. Uh, it's actually, has three frontages at Johnson Drive to the, um, to the north, Highway one oh seven and Johnson Avenue. Uh, the clinic is proposed as nine thousand eight hundred and thirty-three square feet and it's to be located on the far east portion of the site. Uh, this application was initially reviewed back in September and at that time it was approved, but since then, the applicant has significantly redesigned the site and changed the orientation of the building and, and so it did necessitate a new review. Uh, the development will take sole access from Johnson Drive. And since the staff report was issued, the applicant has further revised the plans to correct the outstanding conditions of approval that included revising the dumpster enclosure to be a masonry wall, adding the fence material label and showing existing hydrant locations on the proposed plan. As the revised proposal meets the minimum standards for development and is in appropriate use of the site, staff does recommend, recommend approval of the site planned.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Any questions or comments from the commissioners?
I had a couple of comments on this one. Um, and in this plan here, we've got the, the fence along the back and then the new sidewalk. Who maintains the, the grass or whatever between the sidewalk and the fence?
If, if it's in right of way, that would be, that would be public.
So the city would have to pick up moving that section of grass along there?
Is it?
I mean, typically unless it's a, unless it's the state, probably, that's going to be the, the proper yard that usually.
They will typically do it? Okay.
Okay. Uh, the other question I had, if you can, if you can pull up toward we can see Johnson on the, that entrance, keep moving farther.
Yes. I don't know how to.
That's okay. That, that's good.
Oh, I see it. I see it in here now, sorry.
Um, I'm concerned with that one on the left, that if someone turns left out of there like at four o'clock when there's a lot of school traffic and they can't quite get in the turn lane, that it's going to cause traffic to back up on one oh seven. Can we make that a right turn only out of that entrance?
Right in, right out driveway there?
Yeah.
We could propose it, I suppose, to the applicant and have that conversation.
Mr. Powell, now I see you sitting out there.
You can't hide. We see you in the front door. I do appreciate you getting rid of the zigzag drive out the back. I didn't like that before, so.
Yeah, it works, but not well. Okay. Um, I'm going to read this real quick. Looks like we have about two hundred feet from the, uh, from the intersection there. That allow good amount of cars to stack up. We'd like to keep it.
Yeah, I just know that.
Keep it as it is and you've got one right across the street doing the same thing, basically successfully.
One across the street's actually marked as a right turn only, so.
Well, I, I, I think we'd like to keep it this way.
Cause I know there's a lot of traffic that turns right there and goes into the, that neighborhood and during the school, there's a lot of traffic that backs up at that light and I can see it being a problem, so, even that far back. Cause we've already got the, the right turn lane to let people kind of slip by the people at the light and I, I don't want to cause people to back up onto one oh seven.
Back up on the one oh seven?
Yeah, if they're turning right off of one oh seven and you've got somebody that's turned left that hadn't quite made it into the turn lane and they're blocking the drive.
Well, I mean, to be technical. To be technical, if you're blocking the right turn lane, you're illegally.
Well, I mean, you're, you're.
That's an illegal maneuver to stop there.
You're going to be illegal. Anyway, but it's just a tempting thing for someone to do. It's like, oh, there's more traffic coming from the right. I'm going to pull out and get my spot in line.
Yeah.
And they're not going to make it and they're going to block that, that, that line of traffic.
I, I feel pretty good this is going to work.
I, I, I drive through there every day.
Okay. I mean, it's your purview. We can, to answer your question, yes, we can do it. We don't want to do it.
Okay.
How's that?
Okay.
This, this is a relatively low volume driveway and, and it's, it being a sixty foot road, you know, Collector Street, there's, you, you do have traffic that, that is at peak times. And so I don't know that it, it's, it's going to, doing right turn in and out. And at this particular location would have the same impact or, or value that you might see on, on Highway one oh seven. Um, particularly if, if something looks backed up, they can just go over to the next, the next exit onto, onto Johnson Drive. That is an area with right turn in, right turn out. Typically, unless you've got really some kind of really strong channelization there, they're not super effective.
I, I was thinking we would do curbs and stuff to make them turn right. They could, you could turn left in there. I wouldn't mind turning left.
And unfortunately, that may interfere because that is the, that is the, the location where the trash truck would come in and out. So that, that could be, presents some difficulties for a trash.
And is the trash truck going to back all the way out or is he going to turn around?
Well, I just mean, I just mean in terms of operation.
Right.
But those, those are some things to consider.
That was my, my next question was you've got the, the driver with heavy duty asphalt coming in for the dumpster, the dump truck or whatever dumpster, dumpster truck, uh, to come in. He picks it up and then I guess he's supposed to back back out of there. Unless you want him to turn on the not heavy duty asphalt.
Yeah, more than likely though, I, I don't, I don't know in terms of what, what y'all were thinking in terms of operation there, but again, I, I would say the, the staff position is it's a relatively low volume driveway. So it, it wouldn't be one where we'd have major concern.
Yeah, it, it, it's still concerning because we've made the, apparently made, made the people across the street do a, a right turn only out of their gas station, but it's, it's just painted. But it's a right turn only out of that, that entrance.
Now, I, I can see that warranted for, for a gas station being a much higher volume of use.
But, uh, that, it really concerns me that someone's going to try and turn, I, I know at four o'clock when all those buses and schools are there and someone's there trying to turn left, they're going to get a little break and they're going to pull out because they're going to see more stuff coming and they're going to block that lane. They're going to do it. And then, then you're going to get, you know, five or six people coming in to pick up their kids at the school at the same time. They're going to back up on one oh seven. I, I understand the concern.
And, um, some kids walk as well.
Mm-hmm. Lot of kids walk through there.
Yeah.
Any more comments or questions?
No, that's all I had.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I motion to approve they correct that entrance, make it right turn only out of the, as an exit.
I'll second.
With the curb.
You agree with, with the curb?
Yeah.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Uh, Cliff.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Hoskin.
No.
Evans Delory.
Aye.
Patel.
Aye.
Uh, replat at eighty.
Ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Um, thank you for that. Thank you for approving it. Um, if I want to change that and we want to come back, what would be the process to do so?
Changes and put.
If I still want a left turn movement there, what would be the process?
Oh.
Cause my, cause my client's going to ask.
So the, the process from this point, the planning commission has acted on the item. Um, and so decisions of the planning commission are appealable to council and so it would be, it would be basically, uh, in a, an appeal, city council of the planning commission's decision.
I have a question.
Need to be within thirty days. It would need to be within, it would need to be for the next.
Could it, could it be a revision?
I think we treat those as a new filing, don't we, James? If they backed it on and then they've come in with a revised plan, that's more or less start over at that juncture.
Unless, unless there's like, the vote that was taken is expunged, then it's, that, that was considered final action on the, the item. So if they expunged, they expunged the vote, then the, then the item is reactivated.
So it's just going to be a metal?
Yeah. But, but, but I think from a, from a standpoint of they've taken action, so if there's not a, if there's not a decision to expunge that vote, then what the applicant's relief in the situation or, or next step would be to, is appeal that, appeal that particular portion of the decision to the city council.
Unless he has a major change to the site plan, which is why we're here again. I mean, cause this is the second time we've had a site plan at this lot, so.
Yeah, and in that's, that situation, that's why we, we brought it back.
Right, right.
I have a question. I thought the motion on the floor was that we were simply making a requirement that that was going to be a left turn out of that particular drive.
Right turn.
I didn't, excuse me, right turn, right turn only. I didn't understand that the motion was that we were approving the plan subject to that. I thought.
No, that was.
No, that was the motion, yeah.
If I, if I may.
Yes, yes, sir.
So thank you again for the approval. I'm approved and all that kind of stuff. I can begin permitting and all that kind of stuff. If I come back and say, hey, I want, and all I change is to specify not right and then turnout. And it doesn't pass, then I just, then it just defaults back to the original approved, correct? Is that something that could? Cause I'd like to see the vote, how it happens vote wise if it, with a left turn, I guess, is my point. I lose, I lose that vote, but I go back to the other one, I guess. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so, so with the, with the staff recommendation on the, the item, I think there were, there were three conditions. That's an additional condition, so it would be an appeal of that particular condition, condition to city council. Cause there, there were a couple of corrections as well.
They were made?
They were made.
Yeah, they were made. So it's just the one condition. Yeah, so all you, all you need to appeal to the city council is the one condition.
And I'm thinking that that will need to happen at the February because they won't meet again. The thirty days would come and go before the March meeting. So we would need a letter pretty quick.
Before Tuesday next week, right?
I, I think, I'm thinking what I'm, what I'm asking, what I'm asking is, is can I come back to this body and ask for them to vote on a new site plan that shows a left turn? It may fail by vote. If it does, then just this vote goes back.
Well, in that case, I think.
Cause that's a, like that, to me, that's a significant change. Does that make sense?
I'm thinking procedurally, what you would want to ask the count, the commission to do now would be two things. One, expunge the vote. I agree with you, James, on it, is that. And two, ask them to send it back to staff and let you make those revisions and move it to the March meeting. You think that would work, James?
That.
The, what, are, are you saying you want to make the revision?
Well, my client's going to ask why, okay? And so I just want to make sure I get the steps correct next.
So I think, I think you got
Okay.
Two choices.
All right, thanks.
Appeal, appeal the condition decision to the council.
Okay.
Or right, ask us right now to expunge the vote and wait till March. Make your modification and bring it back in March as modified. It's what I took out of the two.
Or get your client's approval to the modifications and make them and.
Yeah, that's what I, I just want to have it all covered.
Right, yeah, or three, just.
Okay.
Get him to, yeah, okay.
And for the record, I thought what we were voting on was just to amend that site plan to require that. I did not realize we were voting to approve the site plan with that amendment. I approved the site plan the way it's presented to us. I just didn't.
What you didn't like is the condition attached to.
I didn't like the condition that we put in on it.
Still the way you voted.
That's still the way you voted.
Still the way you voted.
I will make it clear.
All right. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Next item, please.
Replat at eighty four oh three Highway one oh seven.
Okay. So this application is for a replat of approximately three point one acres that's zone C three. It's located there on Highway one oh seven. Uh, this location is currently the U.S. Pizza Restaurant. The applicant is requesting to replat what is currently a portion of lot four and all of lots five and six of block twenty-three Sylvan Hills addition into two lots. Uh, the two new lots would be five A and five B and they would, uh, be comprised of approximately one point four and one point seven acres respectively. Lot five A would be the current U.S. Pizza Lot and five B would be the interior lot to the rear that would be accessed by an ingress and egress easement that aligns on the existing driveway at the north of the site. The applicant has requested two waivers as part of this application. The first being a waiver from the additional right of way dedication that would be required along Highway one oh seven. And the second would be a waiver from the requirement that the ingress egress easement be constructed to the minimum street standards. The site was previously reviewed in twenty eighteen as a replat and at that time, they did include the same waiver request for the right of way dedication and it was approved. Uh, however, the replat was never finalized or filed. Uh, as the existing driveway currently functions as an access to the rear of the site and is unlikely to be developed into a street, that waiver request is considered appropriate. With the two waivers, the replat meets the minimum requirements of the zoning district and subdivision regulations and staff does recommend approval of the replat with those two waivers.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the commissioners? So Mesquito is right. This was a, a, a lot that we took up, uh, a few years ago. And there, the discussion then about the right of way was we never thought one oh seven was going to be widened any further than it was, so we didn't require them to. So, uh, approving this waiver again tonight is, is the same action that we took about six years ago, whatever, whatever date she said.
Make a motion to approve the replat subject to the two waivers.
Yes, sir. All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. We please call the roll.
Cliff.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Hoskin.
Aye.
Evans Delory.
Aye.
Patel.
Aye.
Uh, final plat at one four eight one five Highway one oh seven.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Would it be possible to reopen discussion on the agenda item? Was it the prime care site plan?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, we'll go back.
Yes.
Hang on. Why don't you call it again? Just for your, your records, everybody knows what we're talking about.
I, I believe the fire marshal has some concerns he would like to express related to operation of
Okay.
Fire apparatus.
All right.
Are we back on six?
Yeah. We'll go back to the site plan for lot twenty-eight Sylvan Hills addition.
All right. So everybody's clear. We're back to the site plan of the medical clinic between the two Johnson Drives.
So my concern is, and I understand.
Tell us, hang on, stop for a second. Tell us your name and who you are, so, for her record.
Josh Clay. I'm the fire marshal.
Thank you, sir.
Josh Clay, fire marshal.
Thank you, sir.
So my concern with this property is if you start putting islands in the entrances, that hinders the access for the fire trucks.
Okay. So. All right. So I, I guess, here's, here's. All right, so your motion a minute ago had curbed, uh, island in it, right turn in, right turn out.
Right.
Okay.
We can change it to a painted.
So we need to expunge that vote. First, and vote on that, and then you can make another one.
Okay.
All right. So we need a motion to expunge.
Motion to expunge the previous vote.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to expunge the previous vote on item number?
Six.
Six. Call the roll.
Cliff.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Hoskin. Evans Delory.
Aye.
Patel.
Aye.
Okay. So back to discussion and comments for item number six, based on what the fire marshal just said.
Okay, so if we can't, if, if the fire marshal isn't uncomfortable with, uh, curbs, I, I'm okay with, uh, painted striping and signage indicating a right turn only out of that.
Okay.
Location.
Now, what the public chooses to do when they drive, that's all on their own, but we've, you've done our due diligence there.
Tried to stop them from doing it.
All right. So we now have a motion with a painted right turn in and out. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Cliff.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Hoskin. Evans Delory.
Aye.
Patel.
Aye.
All right.
Final plat at one four eight one five Highway one oh seven.
We're just working to put the chairman through.
Yes.
Through his paces.
Meeting number two and y'all are testing me tonight. Cause we did vote on seven. Yeah, okay. All right, I'm just making sure. All right, we're on number eight.
Uh, this application is a companion, uh, to the, the next application, uh, for the T-Rex gas station. Uh, staff reviewed this. Uh, the only major concern we had was, was dedication of, of right of way, uh, for Jacksonville Cato to meet the, uh, master street plan standards. Uh, there's one remaining condition, uh, for perfecting the application, which would be a bill of assurance that addresses dedication of right of way. Uh, but staff, uh, reviewed it and it meets all requirements. So recommend approval.
Okay. All right, are there's any questions or comments from the commission?
I have a question. It's the existing pump, it says remains and the canopy remains. Uh, are they going to do, I know they're putting a new, uh, tanks, but are we checking the lines that connects to the pump and, uh?
I'm sure that means it's a whole new underground system.
That, that, we'll get to that in a second.
Yeah, yeah, but that's, yeah.
This is just whether or not they can subdivide the property.
Yeah.
The, the site, the site plan will, will take that for the next time.
Yeah, that's a next. Yeah, so this is just simply the plat of, for that lot with the right of way dedication.
I guess I'm confused. Why are we replating this?
Cause it's a meets and bounds lot. It does not have a lot and block subdivision legal description to it right now.
Well, did it not have one before then?
No, cause this was, this was a lot that was annexed into the city back in two thousand and eight, so did not have to go through the plating process to construct a structure at that time when it was outside the city limits, which it does now, which is the reason for the plat. So this item is just the plat at this point. So, is there any questions or comments concerning the plat and the right of way dedication? Do we have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the final plat.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Cliff.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Williams. Aye. Hoskin. Evans Delory.
Aye.
Patel.
Aye.
Conditional use permit at one four eight one five Highway one oh seven for a gasoline service station.
Yes, so as was pointed out, this property, uh, previously developed, um, there was a fire at the location. It closed, so it lost its, its non-conforming status at that point. Uh, so that's why it's been brought back for, for review. Uh, this was developed before it was being, before it was annexed. Um, and we've since changed the regulations, uh, in, in terms of that. So requirement with the, with the conditional use permit for this. Uh, in, in looking at it, um, the particular site, you can note, uh, the, the additions of landscaping, uh, to the, to the question of, of adding back, uh, underground tanks. That is one of the proposals that they, they've included within the application. The existing canopy, uh, will, will remain. The existing canopy, uh, will, will remain. They did propose putting, uh, cladding to meet the, meet the requirements uh, and, um, additionally new structure there, uh, for that, uh, but using a lot of the, the existing pavement. And so you can see in the site plan that in terms of the standards of approval for a conditional use, uh, there are six standards that the, the planning commission looks at when you're evaluating whether or not, uh, a use is appropriate in a particular location. And so staff did some, some rather, uh, in-depth analysis, uh, on this. Uh, the first, uh, one of the first conditions being, um, if negative external effect, effects of the conditional use can be mitigated with appropriate and reasonable conditions of approval and staff reviewing this. Uh, based on the surrounding zoning and uses, the use may negatively impact, uh, abutting uses and traffic patterns uh, may pose a con- safety concern specifically due to the driveway on Highway one oh seven. It is located within the operational area, uh, of the intersection with, with Jacksonville Cato, so that light there, it would have, you would have a situation where you would have, uh, left turns that would be conflicting with the turn lane. You'd have people turning left out of the site that would be going past turn lane where traffic is trying to weave into the turn lane, so it, generally from a transportation planning standpoint, that is less than favorable. To be fair though, the applicant, uh, did propose reducing the existing sixty-some-odd-foot driveway down to, uh, I believe, a, a thirty, thirty-six-foot driveway or thereabouts. But that is one of the, one of the particular concerns with this, it being a, a very high-volume driveway on a very high-volume roadway. Uh, adequate buffering, uh, devices such as fencing, landscaping or grading are sufficiently used to protect adjacent nearby properties. Uh, though there is fencing, intense evergreen landscaping are proposed adjacent to the residential development. Uh, there are twelve-foot tall light fixtures that are also proposed in the same area and it, it is very likely that there will be some level of light trespass that, that occurs going on to adjacent property, uh, and again, this is surrounded, there are adjacent residential properties and so there is, there is concern with that. Uh, traffic generated by the use will not unduly burden transportation facilities with the surrounding area. Um, addressed that previously with the traffic concerns, uh, particularly the, the driveway located out onto, uh, Highway one oh seven, uh, being a, a particular concern. The next is the size of the site. Uh, one of the conditions is determining whether or not the site is adequate for the conditional use. Though the site did operate as a service station previously, the buildable area for redevelopment has been reduced to right-of-way dedications on Highway uh, one oh seven a- as well as the, the, sort of the, part of the right-of-way dedications on, on Jacksonville Cato. Uh, and based on staff analysis, with all of the requirements and all of the, the sort of modern conditions with, with service stations and the requirements of the city, city ordinance, size of the site does not seem, uh, adequate for, for the particular use. Uh, and then last, uh, the conditional use will be in compliance with all applicable provisions of the code, code including but not limited to area requirements, off-street parking and loading, landscaping for the district in which it's located. Um, the extent of the encroachment of the non-conforming fuel canopy, which is, which is to remain, uh, would prevent, uh, required and necessary screening, buffering elements uh, along JFK and Highway one oh seven front edge, so it, there, there is that well. So, so based on, based on that, the, the staff recommendation, uh, is for denial of the application based on it not meeting the requirements of the conditions or the standards of approval.
Questions or comments from the-
Mr. Chairman, it's a public hearing.
Oh, you're right. Thank you for the reminder. Uh, this is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing to allow for comments. If there's anyone in the audience wants to speak for or against the item. Did you have any email then? No email comments, so I will declare the public hearing closed. So, comments or questions from the commission?
You said it didn't meet several of the requirements for the city of, as it's currently laid out. Does it meet the parking requirements? Cause there's only like five parking spaces that I can see.
Do you?
The only comment was, uh, it does meet the parking minimums and the only comment staff had was, uh, the inclusion of an ADA accessible spot. So, um, the parking requirements are different for service stations because of the fuel pumps and the way cars stack in there, so they don't have to have as much-
Parking, okay.
So we'll have a four pumps? There's quite a, Mr. Chair- He had quite a long list of reasons not to approve this.
Yeah.
Um, you know, so weigh that in the decision of the motion.
I, I, I'll, I'll make a motion that based on, uh, staff's comments to not approve, I would deny the, this, this, uh, request.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
So to be clear, a vote aye is to deny.
Not, yeah, that's what I was about to say. Yes, yeah, affirmative vote is a denial.
Clough?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Hoskin? Evans Delory?
Aye.
Patel?
Aye.
Uh, the item from old business is moved to next month. Is there any new business? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn.
Clough?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Hoskin?
Aye.
Evans Delory?
Aye.
Patel?
Aye.
Surprise!
Next month.
Next month at the next month's meeting, right?
Yeah, okay. I mean, that was one of the reasons I asked the question last month. So, they had one of two things. They either need to reduce the building or they're gonna come ask for a very-
So basically, that lot, that station was on background.
It would have passed.
It would have passed back in.
It would have passed back here.
I mean, you'd, you'd, you'd think-
If there had been zoning.
Yeah, you'd see it now, though, it's like, oh, it was a gas station, that was making a gas station.
I would have sat there waiting to be tracked, okay? You talking about left turn?
That, I was gonna, that was gonna be another one.
If you're coming from the Air Force place, you turn right and somebody's trying to turn left in there, my golly, you're gonna sit there, okay?
Yeah, i- i- if, if we'd gotten to that, that point, I would've said we're gonna do the same thing. We're gonna make it right turn only, but-
With paint and not signs, no curbs.